Welcome to the July 12, 2022, Appleton McSchool District Board of Education Meeting. If you're seeing this recording later, we are in the dark here at District Office and we are broadcasting without power and limited Internet connectivity. So this is going to look and sound a little different than it has recently with not as much technology support.
Madam President, just so we're clear, we're only in the dark, literally, not figuratively.
Not figuratively, correct. Thank you, Mr. Forston, for that clarification. I'm going to take a look at tonight's agenda and let you guys know that the board went into an executive session at 5:30 at the motion of Mr. Forston and the second of Ms. Wright to discuss legal issues and personnel matters. We are now here and we're going to start our meeting as we do start all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I publicly apologize for us being late. I do not like being late, but it was a little bit out of our control this evening due to the circumstances of the weather. Dr. Burrows, do we have any agenda adjustments this evening?
We do, just due to lack of technol... We do, just due to lack of technology and time. I also wanted to mention that this is being recorded. Any presentation that weren't unable to get up tonight will be available via Board Doc, so if you want to see the presentation, it'll be there, but we're going to try to avoid as many of those presentations as possible. So we're going to make some adjustments on things that we just need to make sure that we get done this month, and then we'll pick the other things up in August. So, just a few of the items. The construction update with no pictures will be very boring, so we're going to table that. We're also going to table the minutes from the two meetings we had in June. We're going to table the Policy Series 3000. We're going to table the monthly financial, internal, and extern... Yeah, monthly financial and internal reports. We have to... Sorry, I'm not blaming it on the light, can't see this. We have to do the bond anticipation note, so that will stay on the agenda. Tax warrant we need to do tonight will stay on the agenda. Preliminary budget we need to do tonight, stay on the agenda. Transportation recommendation, we need to take action tonight. Yet specs and orders stay on the timeline, construction timeline. We'll try to do that tonight. Construction contracts, I don't believe are there. There are any, is that correct? So we won't do that tonight. Change orders you cannot see, so we will not do those tonight unless there's one that needs our approval.
Yeah, they've got one large one that needs...
Okay, so we'll do that one change order. And then the salary scales, we need to do that because they need to update those in the systems. Personnel report we'll do as well, so...
So if I'm correct in hearing you, we are tabling item B under five?
Yes.
And under eight, we're tabling A, B, C, D, E. And that's it?
That's correct. And also...
Not all of the change orders, only the one missing.
Okay.
We don't? Okay, so L, item L will be tabled as well, so...
N.K.
N.K. Okay. So what that tells me is anyone joining us in August, it's going to be a great meeting. All right, no special recognitions tonight, so we're going to move on. Were there any delegations, Dr. Burrows?
There are not.
Okay. So moving on to our very first agenda item tonight, we are going to do the swearing-in of our new board member, Nichelle DeWitt.
We're going to stand up here in front? You're going to give me a light?
Don't forget the Bible.
She brought her own.
Oh.
We're charging more lights so you can see.
Right way to do this.
Is that good? The way this is going to go is off the light on the view. So... I.
I.
Nichelle DeWitt.
Nichelle DeWitt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Delaware.
The Constitution of the State of Delaware.
And the laws of Delaware governing public education.
And the laws of Delaware governing public education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school board member.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I do further solemnly swear.
And I do further solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay.
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed or offered to, promised to contribute.
Contributed or offered to or promised to contribute.
Any money or other valuable thing as consideration or reward.
Any money or other valuable thing as consideration or reward.
For the giving or withholding a vote at the election at which I was elected.
For the giving or withholding a vote at the election at which I was selected.
To said office, so help me God.
To said office, so help me God. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'll have Nichelle shade, Nichelle, and then back to my hands. Are you sure? Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Welcome to the team.
All right, guys, if you need help.
That was better.
Press the top of the...
I just can't read it. All right. Maybe. Ooh, that one was not... Oh, no, that is too bright. Congratulations to our newest board member and welcome to the team. Moving on to the agenda items, we're going to do the election of new school board officers. This is something that we do every single July. Is there a motion on the floor for this item?
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we appoint Nichelle Wall as president and Richard Forston as vice president for the 2022-2023 year.
And Kelly, do you have as part of that motion someone for executive secretary?
And Dr. Burrows for executive secretary.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a second? So I have a motion on the floor from Kelly Wright, a second from Nichelle DeWitt for the election of the school board officers, the role of President Nichelle Wall, Vice President Richard Forston, Executive Secretary Matt Burrows. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none, all of those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing...
Does Norm...
Is Norm on Zoom? Because do we need to be able to hear him?
I don't see him. Okay. So motion passes for...
Motion passes for...
Four votes.
With four votes. Do I need to wait?
No, we don't need to... That's fine. I mean, it's a quorum and we've got what we need. If Norm was on, he would need to say what his vote is out loud because the governor's order was that people on Zoom have to...
Have to vote audibly.
Is he on now?
So that's fine.
Matt, is it okay to continue or do you want me to wait? All right, moving on in our agenda, we're going to go to the appointment of school board members to committees. All of us have the privilege of serving on various committees throughout the year in addition to our role as school board members. There is five committees that we serve on. The Delaware School Boards Association, the Legislative Committee of the Delaware School Boards Association, the Advisory Board to the State Board of Education, the Newcastle County Combined School Boards, and the Financial Advisory Council for this school district. Is there a motion about who will serve as the representative and the alternate to each of these committees?
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we fill the following committees with representatives and alternates for the 2022-2023 school year as follows. Delaware School Boards Association Representative Kelly Wright, alternate Norm Abrams. Legislative Committee for the Delaware School Boards Association Representative Nichelle Wall, alternate Nichelle DeWitt. Advisory Board to the State Board of Education Representative Richard Forston, alternate Kelly Wright. Newcastle County Combined Boards Representative Nichelle DeWitt, alternate Nichelle Wall. Financial Advisory Council Representative Norm Abrams, alternate Richard Forston.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion on the floor as presented by Ms. Wright, a second by Mr. Forston for the positions on the five committees as stated. I don't need to read them again. Are there... Would you like my copy?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions, concerns on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we still not have Mr. Abrams? But it could be recorded as a four in favor vote. Moving on to the next items on our agenda, we have the reports. We have the superintendent's report. Dr. Burrows.
So, thank you, everyone, for joining us. Like, thank you, everyone, for joining us. Just, we're well in the summer, it's hard to believe that we're into the second week of July already. It just seems like we wave goodbye to our students on the bus, and I hate saying this, but we're like halfway through summer at this point. We have, on July 1st, what happens in the state and in our districts known as rollover. And so what rollover happens is that basically the seniors that were in our system, they have graduated and moved on, and then the system rolls over, everyone moves up a grade, and our data gets a little cleaner for the next year. Traditionally, what happens at rollover is that we go below what our September 30th count was last year. In my 11 years as superintendent, this is my 12th year, we've never had a year where we rolled over and had more students than we had at September 30th count. Well, this is the year we have. We're already 87 over where we were last year. I don't know if that's too good of a sign because we usually start growing in the next few weeks about 100 to 150 students a week, and it just picks up pace. So we're growing at a nice rate. I will save the transportation report for Tom, so I won't give anything on transportation report, but we are also in the midst of recruiting teachers, and so if you know someone, we'd love to have them. Also, we're recruiting substitute teachers, so we don't have that situation again that we had last year. And we're also recruiting bus drivers, which we're always recruiting bus drivers, but we're recruiting our own bus drivers at this point. So thank you.
You're welcome. Do you want to speak to anything exciting that happened in legislature?
I mean, a few things happened in legislature. I think I shared last month that our biannual unit count went through. So there's a placeholder in the budget for $1 million, which is a start. We're going to continue to push for more money to fund that, but it's a start, it's a positive step in the right direction. We also have found out there's additional safety and security money that is out there. We're still trying to hone in on exactly how much that will be for us, but we do thank the legislators for their support and the governor for supporting us with additional safety and security money, and then some flexibility with that money as well. We also received market pressure money for our project up at Crystal Run. I think I shared with you that that was underfunded, and then with the way the market is right now, we needed additional support, so we also thank our legislators and governor for support in that area. We also received, and I'm going to take some of Eric's, we also received additional minor cap money, which will help us with some projects that have been on our list and have been turned down as we put in for referendums, so that will help us do some much-needed repairs and renovations within our district that have been needed over time. All in all, it was a pretty good legislative season as far as funding for education, and we're appreciative of all the support.
Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we're going to go to the section for board comments, and I will start with Ms. Wright.
Hi, everybody, happy July. Well, you know, in the future when you guys are in Internet world or watching this, but happy July to everybody here. We are almost halfway through the summer, which is happy and sad, I suppose. I don't really have much to add. We have some important topics on the agenda tonight. Hopefully, we have some good discussion about them. And other than that, I just hope everybody continues to enjoy this time away, and everybody's eagerly anticipating the school supply lists and back-to-school shopping and all that, I suppose. So enjoy this downtime before all the chaos starts again, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Mr. Witt.
Hello, everyone. I would like to thank you all for coming out and joining me to join the Appleton McSchool District Board. I look forward to working with you all in the audience and those of you who will be on YouTube soon. But again, I'm excited to be here, excited to work with the board that is already in practice, looking forward to learning and growing with the Appleton McSchool District family. Thank you.
Mr. Forston, would you like to go or would you like me to see if Mr. Abrams has kind of...
Let me see if... Is Norm on the line?
Norm, which...
Yeah.
Welcome. Well, thank you for joining us. Before you joined, we handled a couple of things and we tabled a bunch of things, so I will try to have someone send you an update. You're welcome.
Norm, I'm glad you hear your pictures and showing up anywhere, so you're just a voice coming down from above, but I'm glad you could be here. I just want to welcome, I just want to welcome our new board member, Nichelle DeWitt. You know, being a school board member is often referred to as a thankless job, subject to endless criticisms. Someone called us all Nazis last year, that was pretty exciting. And so it takes a special someone, I think, to step forward, but so far Nichelle has shown a great attitude and a willingness to hit the ground running, and I have every confidence that she will be a great board member in the years ahead going forward. Welcome, Nichelle, I just wanted to state that for the record for everybody. We're glad that you're here, and that's my only comment.
I want to echo that, too, and also recognize that we have Ms. Rowe in the audience, so even though, you know, she's still here, and that anybody who's watching this later, you know, you're interested in board work, what a great way to learn, but as Ms. Rowe has done all these years, too, has come to all these meetings and learned from the other side of the table. Sorry, Nichelle, continue.
Well, that's nice. I echo all the comments of my fellow board members. Welcome to past board member Sean Rowe in the audience, and welcome to the board, Mr. Witt. Look forward to serving with you. I don't have anything specific looking forward to the Groves graduation next week in our district, and I normally, since I ran for school board almost eight years ago now, I have held bagels with a board member monthly. I will tell you, I'm taking a summer vacation and there will be no July bagels with a board member, so I look forward to regrouping with the community in August. In the essence of time, I have no additional comments except very excited for the biannual unit count to be moving forward. I think there's room for growth, but it's definitely a step in the right direction for districts who experience above-average growth after all of our kids are accounted for. Hearing no further comments, we'll move ahead. We have no old business to address, and we will go to new business. As we said, we were tabling items A, B, C, D, and E until August, and we'll move right into the bond anticipation note for FY 2023. Mr. Loftus.
Steve, are we able to put any of the presentation up? Do you know?
No.
All right. So... All right, so if you have the presentation, so this encompasses going through hidden highlights of the preliminary budget and talking about the tax warrant as well as talking about the bond anticipation note. So if it's okay to mix up the three agenda items...
Sure.
...in one presentation?
You're going to address the agenda items F, G, and H with your presentation?
That's correct.
All right.
So I'm going to skip right to the third page where we talk about the ending balance summary. So the general operating ending balance is projected to be $8.1 million at the end of this fiscal year. We started, so the last budget we did back in February for FY 22, we said we were going to come in at 9.478, nine million, almost $9.5 million. We missed that projection. We actually came in at 9.35 roughly, so we missed that projection slightly, and that's just, we had expenses at the end of the year that just didn't... They were on par. We didn't have reductions in spending and things like that that we had hoped we would have, but not a bad miss, and we're still in a very good fiscal place right now. So the, I also want to mention the, as you would see in the preliminary budget that I believe you received over the weekend, or you, the tuition balance, carryover balance, the debt service carryover balance, and the cafeteria funds carryover balance are all in very, very healthy positions right now, probably the healthiest they've ever been. So we're doing very well fiscally. The budget also includes startup funds for transportation for some of the district-owned buses that we're working on, the funding of the 27th pay, and restoring a few budgets, such as IT and curriculum. When we received a lot of COVID funds over the past two years, we made some reductions to the regular budgets for IT and curriculum to help offset some of the funding they were getting, and they received quite a bit, like, for example, in technology. Technology received 2 million, over $2 million in COVID funds, and we reduced their budget by 500, roughly $1,000 last year. So it was just kind of, let's, and the way we were doing that was because COVID funds were used to pay for one-to-one devices that we were otherwise paying for. We were, it was an acceptable use of COVID funds, but it was also something we were planning on doing, for the most part, with the district anyway, and we were able to basically save our local funds. So we're restoring budgets in some places that had taken some hits over the past couple of years because of COVID. The fourth page, just once again reiterating those items, plus, we did receive some additional funding for minor capital improvements, which I'll go into in a slide coming in a minute. I wanted to reiterate, in December, we had gone to referendum for the renovation of Redding Middle School. We promised the public that we would have no tax increase on debt service tax, and this budget reflects that promise being kept. 27th pay I mentioned already. Safety and security, we added $203,000 per what was in the 2019 referendum for the third year of that plan. Tom and his crew have done a great job. I think he's in the fourth year of implementation of that plan, and so we're well ahead of schedule with that. This budget does not include additional funding from the state for safety and security. However, working with Mr. Pullman, we've, we've got most of what we need for safety and security in the expense side of things, so any state funding that would come through would basically just allow us to save local funds and use the state funds for those expenses. And then we do have some remaining S R 3 funds available to kind of shift around to things that might be needed throughout the year, depending on what the needs might be. The next two pages, I go through just the revenue, where we, where we were for actuals in FY 22, and then what the preliminary budget is for FY 23. I would say that the general operating local funds is down, and that's due to the COVID funds that we received last year. So we had put those under local funds, and that's the reason for that drop-off, but everything else is moving up on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, there's a $16.9 million variance, and $11.9 million of that is state salary-related, an increase in state salary. Once again, we're projecting a lot of growth with students. That drives a lot of growth with teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, clerical staff. So we're looking at 4 million, $4.4 million increase on the local salary side. Any questions about those two?
Yeah, before we move off these, so if I'm reading this correctly, it is dark, but our actual, so fiscal year 2022, the budget year that just ended, shows total revenue of $211 million and total expenditures of $203 million. Is that right?
That is correct.
But for the coming year, we're projecting revenue of 218,000, 218 million, excuse me, and expenditures of 220, almost 221 million. So for this coming year, we're actually projecting more in expenditures than revenue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I assume that that difference is coming out of the carryover that we've been holding, knowing that at some point we were going to have to use it to cover this situation. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right. Just want to make sure I was reading it correctly.
But that also doesn't take into consideration the money that we would be getting for safety and security measures that is unaccounted for.
That, that is also correct, although, yeah, and we're still waiting on, the reason why safety and security wasn't included in the revenue was because at the time this budget was put together, we didn't have that information, and I still don't have it.
But is the safety and security money, isn't that going to be a capital item, not an operating item?
It would be an operating item.
This year, it's going to be an operating item, which is different, which is good.
For anyone tuning in who's new to education funding, there's different buckets. So there's capital expenses and operational expenses, so that's also why when we go to referendum, sometimes we go for both.
And the reason it was, safety and security was a capital item for, what that means was that we could use it for door locks, bulletproof glass, alarm systems, things like that, but we couldn't use it for constables and SROs. By, and most of the school districts within the state of Delaware, if not all, lobbied to try to get it to be an operating budget item, not a capital item, because people, right? We need resource officers, we need constables interacting with our kids, getting to know our kids, protecting our facilities, and we've bought an awful lot of bulletproof glass and door locks and things like that. We really needed to have that flexibility to be able to use it for personnel if we needed to.
Well, right, but the only caveat being, if this is a one-time grant and we start hiring people with that money, then we've got that expense going forward, and so it's like candy, here, here, try this, and then suddenly we've got to pay for it. So we just need to watch that.
Well, the way we're looking at it, I think, is we have a plan. The board was given three options, I think, for safety and security, and we went with the middle option, and we're using the money to help offset local costs for this year. No guarantee that we will next year, but it's from, from the perspective that I put the budget together with is, the safety and security stuff is something that we've made a, it's part of the budget, it's a, it was part of referendum, and therefore, we're, we're not going to get carried away with hiring more than we need or more than we planned for.
Right. No, no, I just, look, I'm all for getting extra money, don't get me wrong, but we just need to be careful.
Correct. Any other questions on expenses or revenue?
No.
All right, so moving on, the next slide is minor capital. All right, so moving on. The next slide is minor capital. Wanted to be very clear, there's two components to minor capital. The first part at the top shows regular minor capital of $1.96 million. We receive this amount roughly each year. It'll, it'll vary by up to $100,000 depending on where the state is with their budget. And so we match this each year. And it just so happens that the match tax is the same as it was in FY22. It is for this year, too, to match that segment of match tax. And so what we're talking about here, match tax, minor capital, these are the district's funds for being able to do minor capital improvements around the district. So the threshold is $1 million. So when we have a roof that needs to be repaired on a school, we can use minor capital funds with this. When we have doors that need to be replaced, lights that need to be replaced, filters and HVAC units, things like that, we can use minor capital funds to do that. The state puts up 60% of the cost, and we match it with 40% of that cost. So it's a, it's an opportunity for us to maintain our facilities and the state picking up 60% of that cost. This year, as a one-time item, the state is offering supplemental MCI funds. Now, what they're offering is $1.337 million, which we can match. And this budget is recommending or assuming that we're going to match that, that amount. So that would give us 2.29 million, or 2 point, I'm sorry, 2.23 roughly, million dollars. And this would allow us to tackle some of those things that are kind of one-time initiatives. For example, some of the things that we've been discussing is that there's a, there's some damage to Cedar Lane Elementary's roof. And if we patch it now, we can get another 20 years of useful life out of that roof. And that's a 500,000, 400, $500,000 item. If we don't do that, that's not something that's easily fit into the regular minor cap that we always get. So it's a project that we would like to jump on to get done one time so that we can get another 20 years useful life out of that roof. We have an LED lighting project throughout the district that we could get a jump on, and that could be up to, you know, a couple million dollars, but we can at least switch out some lights and receive the future benefit of energy savings going forward with that. And we do have a problem with the lights at Cavalier Stadium. That would prevent us from being able to play night games there. That's something that's on the agenda as well.
So can I just, I got lots of questions, I suppose, about tonight, but, and this is more a question for Matt. How are we going to prioritize this? Are you going to put together a little subcommittee and have them come to us? Or how are we going to figure that out?
Well, the.
Because there's lots of things we could spend that money on, and I'm sure that different constituencies want their problem addressed as compared to somebody else's.
I mean, I think they prioritize the list and facilities, and these are like their priorities as they look at this money.
Okay.
Danny, I went through and we're privileged together of our needs out there, intensive work, kind of, so the high stuff down, the blood, you know, the, yeah, food being walked out, like stadium being, size championship game is what's going on. And then there's also a lot of lights standing around the district, out there in some of those. The lights being replaced and the work, the efficiency, if you're able to do that, not hit, the normal mindset, that's the 1.9 is still sitting out there, the red light, I thought this is over the bug, 2.2.
Well, right. No, but, but, I mean, there's other things that, you know, in addition to those three. I mean, you know, our administrative building has issues. The roof leaks, water comes into our superintendent's office when it rains, which, which I find very embarrassing. And...
That portion is going out for business.
And we're doing that with the match. Okay, good. Right, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions about minor capital funds?
So to summarize, what that means for my, this additional match is equivalent to 3.45 cents of additional tax. And I would like to point out that it's a one-year, one-time thing. So we raise the tax this year, and then we pull it back and we reduce it next year, assuming that the state is being forthcoming and it's a one-time supplemental thing. So on the next page, the tax rate, the tax warrant, what that means for match tax is it's an increase of 3.29 cents, slightly different than the 3.45 for the one time, because it was an offset with reading and math teacher match tax that we have. That was reduced a little bit because of our growth and just having additional money per penny that we get. So the only two increases would be that we're asking for a penny on tuition tax. That's down from the 2 cents we asked, we were talking about at the board workshop. And that's just, they have a healthy carryover with our tuition funds, and we're in good shape with that. And due to the fact that we're trying to match the one-time ma, minor capital stuff, it made sense to try to keep the tax rate as low as possible. So overall, we're talking about a 4.29 cent increase on the tax warrant. Any questions on the tax warrant?
Should we take this opportunity to remind folks at home on how they calculate this for their own benefit?
We can.
The basic formula.
Yeah, the.
Because we know there's so much misconception about it.
One of the things, well, I guess first of all, anybody who's listening, who's interested in how is this calculated, I would, one, is I would point them to, once, hopefully this budget is approved, I will be posting this online on the district's website. And we go into a lot of detail in trying to explain exactly what the four components of property tax bill are. And on the very last page of the budget, we even show a copy of a tax bill and draw lines to exactly where the different, like what the school district's responsible for, and where, what the county's responsible for, et cetera. But basically, it's whatever the assessed property value is, you divide that by 100, and then you would multiply the tax rate of the district, which is 2.5, 2.5833 cents, or no, 2, yeah, it's $2.58.33 is what you would multiply that with, and you would get your property tax rate as, that the district is, that portion that the district's responsible for. Once again, I don't, there's a lot of layers to it, because the property tax bill also includes a portion from the county. It includes a tax from the vocational school district. And so the school district tax is only a portion of that. Granted, the largest portion of it, but is that?
Yeah, I just, I just want to remind everybody that it's not as easy as looking up your property's value on Zillow and, you know, doing some math, but definitely we, your, your group put some, some, some good aids together at the end of these documents to help folks figure it out on their own, so they understand what the financial impact is to their home. So I just thought that was a good thing to reiterate here.
Thank you.
I think, Eric, as a rule, if your assessment, so this is your assessment, not the fair market value of your house, but if your assessment was $100,000, a 3-cent tax increase would be about $30 for the year.
Correct.
And most people, your house probably is assessed for less than $100,000. Some are more, but I would suspect most are less. Remember, that's a 1983 fair market value. It has nothing to do with today's fair market value. So, and it is, at least in the case of the match tax, a one-time thing that's being proposed. The tuition tax, we have absolutely no control over. It is what it is, and we have to pay that. But the match tax, and there wouldn't be, so that's 1 cent, $10. But the match tax is kind of a special one-year deal where we're now going to be able to make a lot of improvements that we've been meaning to make for a lot of years. But if we don't do this, we lose that opportunity.
Correct. Any other questions about the tax warrant? Do you want to pause here to take a vote on the tax warrant? I, the tax warrant is due to the county every year on the second Thursday of the month of July. And so...
In the agenda, the bond anticipation note is first. Do you want me to skip that and read some, do the tax rate?
Well, so let's do this. The next page is the bond anticipation note.
Well, we can go ahead and, let's just go ahead and, is there a motion to approve the FY 2023 tax warrant?
Madam President, I'll make a motion that for the 2022-2023 tax year, we increase the tuition tax by 1 cent per $100 of assessment. We increase the match tax by 3.29 cents per $100 of assessment with no increase on debt service.
Is there a second?
A second.
So I have a motion on the floor presented by Mr. Forston and second by Ms. Wright to approve the FY 23 tax rate as presented by Mr. Loftus. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Norm, can you, are you still with us? Okay, just making sure. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So circling back, we'll now go to the bond anticipation note. Mr. Loftus?
So the next slide is the 23 bond anticipation note discussion. We're anticipating, well, per the bond bill, we're fully expecting to have two projects funded in this next fiscal year. That would be the Summit Elementary School and the first year of the Reading renovation project. In total, the local obligation for these two projects is 16.9, 16,966,700. A couple of things I want to note on this, we moved all the local funding for the Reading project to the first year. And that was to, in having discussions with Mr. Hopkins and the people that he's working with in order to do these projects, we wanted to make sure there were sufficient funds to get this project moving as quickly as possible. What we're expecting next year, barring any market pressure issues, is that we will not have any requests to bond any funds, because we will have fully funded the Reading project at that point. Speaking of market pressure, though, so I want to make a comment here. What we're doing, we're recommending we move $2 million worth of VSA funds to offset the 16.9 million we're bonding. So we'll actually bond 14.14,966,700, use 2 million in VSA. This would give us today, once we take away the 2 million, this gives us $6 million in VSA that's available, sitting on the sidelines. The reason we're keeping that parked in reserve is because there are some problems with the construction formula right now, and we anticipate that we are going to need to go to market, get market pressure funds to complete the Reading project. And it's a lot easier to use VSA money to pay the local portion of those additional market pressure funds than to have to. What we don't want to do is go back to the community and have another referendum to bond more additional funds. So my recommendation is to keep the money in VSA, continue to work with Department of Education and OMB to try to change the construction formula. That isn't going to happen overnight. And VSA is continuing to grow by about $1.5 million per year because of the growth we have here, which is our money and can be used on future projects. And we know with all the growth that there's going to be future projects. So it's, it's, we're in great shape with debt service. We can easily handle the, the bonds that we're going to do this year. We also have about $1 million in bonds that will go away over the next three years. So we're in great shape with the debt service piece. And so my recommendation is to just use 2 million of VSA at this time and bond the rest.
Is there a motion?
So, yeah, I was going to ask that. Eric, so the, the motion would be that this year's bond anticipation note is 14,966,700. Is, is that all you need a motion for?
I, so interestingly, Mr. Forston, I asked OMB this very question a couple of, like a week ago, and I'm still waiting on an answer. What, what the intent of the vote is, is that we only bond in a 20-year bond, the 14,966,700, and that we use $2 million of VSA money to pay 2 million of the local obligation. I don't know quite how to make that.
All right, so.
I don't know exactly what number they want to see on the bond anticipation note, but my intent would be for the district to only get into a 20-year obligation for, as I said, 14,966,700.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve a bond anticipation note, I'm going to say in the net amount of 14,966,700. And if the, if OMB or someone else at the state wants that bond anticipation note to be in the amount of 16,966,700, then I, as part of my motion, I want us to use $2 million of the voluntary school assessment funds to pay down the note, so that at the end of the day, as I say, the net amount of the note is going to be 14,966,700.
Great idea. Let's do that.
I'll second that.
All right. So there is a motion on the floor by Mr. Forston, just as he said it, and seconded by Ms. Wright, to approve the bond anticipation note for the fiscal year 2023. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments on this presentation or this motion?
I, I just have one.
Yes, Mr. Abrams. You said net.
Well, I'll, I'll take that as a friendly amendment. If we get any other monies towards this, then, and that, such that we don't need to put in the full 2 million from voluntary school assessment funds, we'll apply that extra money as well. Don't think that's going to happen, but that's a perfectly fine, and I'll take that as a friendly amendment. Kelly, will you also take it as an amendment, since you seconded?
Yes. Are there any other additional questions, comments, concerns, or friendly amendments on this motion? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next agenda item and part of Mr. Loftus's presentation is the FY 2023 preliminary budget for approval.
So we kind of put that information at the start of the PowerPoint, and I don't, I won't rehash everything that we talked about. The budget includes matching the minor cap, no debt service increase, some additional money for safety and security, 27th pay's included, the 4.4 million in local funds for salary increases, well, it's local, local, let me clarify that, 4.4 million in increase in local salary expense, which is inclusive of step increases for various employee groups, information that Mr. Spoor is going to be sharing in a few minutes regarding salary approvals, as well as growth, significant growth for the district due to enrollment growth. So at this time, I'll entertain any questions that you might have regarding the 23 budget.
Let's go with, is there a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 preliminary budget as presented.
Is there a second? So I have a motion by Ms. Wright, a second by Mr. Abrams, to approve the FY 2023 budget as presented. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments on this motion? Mr. Forston? Mr. Forston.
Well, just so there's no misunderstanding here and we're clear, I'm going to vote against the budget. Um, but I probably ought to say why. Last year, we gave a bonus to our teachers because the year, that school year at the end of last year was a difficult school year, and all I heard about our staff, all of our staff, was what a great job they did, and they all came together, and, you know, every parent I ever spoke to was entirely complimentary, and I heard great stories about teachers answering emails at, you know, 9:30 and 10 o'clock at night, and it was a true testament to that. And I've heard all those things again this year as well, don't get me wrong. But I am fundamentally opposed to a 27th pay. Period, end of story, full stop. I would more than be glad to support another bonus to our teachers and staff, but I think a 27th pay is not the way to do it. And I think it's a mistake for a lot of reasons that I'm not going to go into, but if people want to talk to me afterwards, they're more than welcome to. Um, and nobody should take this as my not supporting our staff because I think they're wonderful, and I would support a bonus, but I won't support doing it this way. So I'm going to vote against the budget.
Are there any other additional comments, concerns, questions? Ms. Wright?
Um, yeah, I just want to remind the community that with, uh, the growth that we're experiencing that we talk about over and over in these meetings comes the need to hire staff to be instructing and leading the, all these new classrooms and, and new children that we have coming in the district. Um, and we've had such a struggle with recruiting and, and getting folks to come to the district. And, um, all of our northern brethren in the county at this point are, um, accepting the 27th pay, and I would hate for the district to be at a disadvantage because folks looking for jobs in our area are attracted to the, the districts that are offering such things. So while it's, uh, it is a financial hit, it's also one that is going to, I feel, have to keep us being competitive with recruiting the best talent to be teaching all the children that we have and the children that are moving into the district. That's it.
I too will be supporting the budget moving forward, including the 27th pay because a lot of echoing the words of Ms. Wright, and in lieu of the fact that we are not giving a bonus, and we didn't discuss giving a bonus this year, I think that a, a lot of us looked at this year with great anticipation that we would have the opportunity of a return to normal. I think we can say 2020, 2021 school year was a challenge, but I think the 2021, 2022 year was even harder with that anticipation that we would find normal, and we haven't yet. And so I support the 27th pay in lieu of a bonus, and exactly where what Kelly was saying, we can have the best buildings, we can have the best programming, and we can have the best ideas, but what we really want to do is to make sure that we have the best staff, and if we have an opportunity to say, "We support this for them," then I'm for it. Are there any additional comments?
Well, again, I just want to make, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Abrams.
Norm, before you, um, go there, I do support it as well with the, um, comments that were stated by Kelly and Michelle. I do think it's been a, um, tough year for both educators and all the facilitators or facilities, um, staff that have, have done their best, um, to get the, the year going last year and this year, to keep it going. So I do think that it's, it's, it's due to them, so why not?
Thank you.
And again, I just want to be clear. I'm not saying that we shouldn't reward our staff and, and our teachers and everybody. I just don't think this is the way to do it, and nothing prevents us from doing a bonus in lieu of the 27th pay. I don't really care that much about what other districts do. Uh, they can spend their money as they see fit, and they spend their money extravagantly, in my view, in a, in a lot of cases. But this is not the way that I would do it, and I don't like it, and there's a lot, I could go on and on, but it's just going to take up time and, and it's getting dark. So, um, I, but I just want to be clear. I'm not saying we shouldn't be rewarding our staff for what was another difficult and traumatic year. This is just not the way to do it, in my view.
We're all entitled to the different opinions. I mean, we've asked, um, the Financial Advisory Committee has given the thumbs up on including this in the budget as it being fiscally responsible. We have proven time and time again to our community that we spend our resources wisely, and when you look at the amount of money being spent on this in comparison to a bonus, it is not that different of a comparison. Mr. Forst, Mr. Abrams, where did you want us to go? Page eight? I don't have page numbers.
He's talking about the budget.
Oh.
All right, your question is?
We don't have it.
Um, you should have been sent the revised budget. You didn't receive that?
Okay.
Yeah. No. The Financial Advisory Committee on Thursday found an error in the budget, um, that we investigated and made a correction to. Um, and it wasn't material in nature, um, but we have some people that volunteer for that committee are doing a great job and certainly appreciate them having my back and looking at that information and catching little mistakes. Sometimes when you're in the forest for too long, it's hard to see things from the 30,000-foot view, so.
We, we know you just did it.
Yep.
We know you just did it to make sure people were paying attention, Eric.
Are there any further questions, concerns, or comments? If not, I will go forward with the motion by Ms. Wright. Or, I'm sorry, was there a motion to approve the budget?
Yes.
Ms. Wright and Mr. Mr. Abrams. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Abrams, like, are you voting?
I'm not.
Okay. Those opposed?
Nay.
So motion carries four to one. Moving on to the next agenda item, we have the transportation recommendation for approval, Mr. Pullman.
Uh, before I get started here, I do, I want to apologize to the board that you had to read online about our committee meeting the other night. Uh, the situat, it was not intended, and the situation was addressed, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Steve? So the current situation by the numbers, uh, as I said, uh, last, last month, uh, eight school buses have been obtained. Uh, they are used buses, a few of them are sitting outside right now at no cost to the district. It was a transfer of state property. Uh, last month, I think I listed some of the things that were going to cost us, uh, money to get those buses up to speed. Uh, safety, maintenance, detailing, uh, the marking of the bus at Aquinomic School District. I was able to put a number to that, so approximately it's costing us $25,000 a bus. Uh, and eight bus drivers are pretty much hired, but, you know, I think there are a few with paperwork issues and whatnot, so in the process, we'll call it for now, but eight drivers are pretty, um, shored up at this point. Next slide. So as of today, two of our contractors have returned 11 contracts, and that is despite the fact that the legislature has significantly increased the state formula that gave drivers raises and also a per-mile administrative fee for our contractors. We were hoping that didn't happen after this became official, but it happened. Four contracts from one contractor, seven from another contractor. Unfortunate, but that's the situation. As a reminder, as we look at numbers throughout the presentation here, uh, last school year, the one that just ended on June 30th, we did spend over $830,000 on incentives and coverage. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, the ongoing concerns are return contracts. Uh, we would hope that we're not going to get any more return contracts this summer, but you never know, given what we've dealt with the last few years. Um, as we all know, um, you know, students haven't had a school bus, teams have been left stranded, activities have been left, um, without a bus and haven't been able to show up to events, and we continue to build schools and add students, um, as we all know. So that's a reminder. Next slide, please. So we met on Thursday night, as I alluded to, at 6 o'clock in the boardroom. Uh, we had a good discussion, and the committee is prepared to make a recommendation that, um, we'd like to add up to 25 additional school buses. The 25 because particularly one of our contractors has been erratic. I use the word erratic right now, and I, we can't, we can't, uh, head towards a school year with the word erratic in our vocabulary right now. So 25 is the number that the group settled on. Now, the reality of the situation tonight is we can add 11 new school buses with approval tonight. We have them, um, to obtain with approval. It, it, it might be difficult at this, uh, point to add 25, but with approval, we will start the search for the additional buses. And as far as a cost on the 11, the $95,000 number, it's approximate, but it's, it's a pretty decent number, what we would be looking at for 11 new buses, which would still put us under what was approved, uh, to spend on transportation. Steve, is that the last slide? I forget. Well, and then, I just wanted the, everyone to know that, you know, sometimes committee work, it's easy to get off track. We've tried to stay focused through the guiding principles that we need to get kids to and from school every day. A lot of times, we talk a lot about sports. I love sports. We get sidetracked by that, but our number one goal is to get kids to and from school every day. We continue to want to work with our contractors, where we want to avoid paying extra than the state formula, which has pretty much been insured at this point. And the fourth one, focused on what's best for students' families while maintaining fiscal responsibility. There's two things embedded in there, which are district core values. So I think that's, that's it. Any questions?
I have a question. So with the idea of adding 25 more buses, I mean, we know we can have resources, but it does come back to being about people. Do we think we can have 25 drivers?
Stacy, do you think we can have 25 drivers?
Uh, we certainly can. Uh, I mean, we have the applicants for that. I think, uh, I mean, for the start of the school year, I think it might be fleet is the problem, but we can certainly, you know, DOE's got our back and is searching for as many buses as they can possibly get for us.
Okay.
Steve, can we go back a slide? Because this may come as a surprise to people who weren't at the transportation committee meeting.
We all read it in the paper. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, but my name didn't appear, and, which is good. Um, but I'm tired of this. I mean, as folks may know, I mean, nobody has fought against our district buying a single bus more than I have. It just goes against.
In fact, you said you would never vote yes for a bus.
I think I said I would die in that ditch.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. So I'm wondering how this is going to go.
But I got to tell you, I mean, and number two, it says, "Work with our contractors, not replacing them." I'm not going to take it anymore. And if contractors start coming to us and start giving us more bus routes back, I'm going to take those bus routes back, and I'm going to take all their bus routes. And that's why the number went from 11 to 25, because it's not customer service when you just want to cherry pick the very best routes and then give us a major headache in the middle of the summer. That's not customer service, that's not somebody I want to do business with, and if that's the way contractors are going to act, then we are going to replace you. And, and so I just want people to understand that, and I want the contractors to understand that. We want you to work with us, but if you're not going to work with us, we're not going to work with you, period. And if we got all 25 buses, one of our contractors would no longer be providing service to this district, a contractor that used to provide over 50 buses to us.
But I think it's important that you're actually driven by principle number four.
Well, that's the point. I mean, we got to do what's best for our students, and we can't get caught in the middle of the summer with contractors giving us back bus routes, and then we're left scrambling. I'm just, I'm done. And, and I think we should all be done with being treated like that. So, and I'm, I, by the way, not all our contractors are doing this, and, and so the ones who are, I'll say, acting above board, and the ones who are providing customer service, we should reward those folks as much as possible. But if folks come back to us, especially between now and the start of the school year, if we get one more bus contract back, it's not going to be pretty.
With this positive endorsement by Mr. Forston of focusing on what's best for students and families, is there a motion on the floor for the transportation update? Is there a second?
A second.
So I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Abrams and seconded by Ms. Wright to approve the transportation recommendation. Are there, and I hear there are questions? Mr. Abrams.
Um, I mean, that's one of the concerns that I brought with the recommendation. We're appreciative of the recommendation and that flexibility, it's just the operational side. So there are going to have to be some additions operationally if we add 25 additional buses, um, personnel-wise. Currently, I mean, we could get away with it for a year on, on our current property in putting those buses, but we would actively be pursuing and looking for a piece of property to be able to store our buses on.
Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question.
Just do it.
So with the 25 additional school buses, um, we get those, will this remove the, um, 3,400 parents that are currently busing their, or taking their kids to school every day for the current population of students we have now? Or do we still have that problem?
No, we should not have that problem. No, we, we should be good to go if we have the fleet and the drivers, absolutely.
The population of the students we have now, not assuming that we're going, well, Norm, we want to get more after the.
That is correct.
Unit funding, okay. Thank you.
I think, Norm, what we're saying is that there, the problem right now isn't that we're experiencing a personnel shortage in interest, we might be experiencing an not availability of buses at this point in time in the summer. Sure, I'm sure it's hard not being in the room.
Just, just to clarify too, as a point of clarification, there, the state's asking us now for a number of buses that we will need for next, not this coming school year, but school year '23, '24. So just to kind of put that in perspective, but I will say the state has worked with us in trying to secure buses and our need for buses, so they've been a very gracious partner for us at this point.
So it all seems like good news at this point.
Well, we got back a bunch of contracts we didn't want to get back.
Well, that was bad news, but a plan in place to address. So are there any other questions or committee, or any to take about? All in favor, the, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Norm, did you vote yes? Okay.
Motion carries five to oh with Mr. Forston supporting buses. Yay!
Nothing will make me happier than when we end up selling them to some contracting company and get out of the business.
Nothing will make you happier than when all children arrive at school. Yes, that's what he said. Okay, moving on in the agenda to the next item that I'm having a hard time seeing in the dark. Um, education specifications for the Louis Hall Reading Middle School. Mr. Hopkins, thank you.
Okay, after a couple of.
Okay, after a couple of months of programming meetings with the staff and with Reading staff and our administrative staff, we've put together the EdSpec for Lewis Reading, and we're bringing that to the board for approval. We've had the administrators look at it. There's been no objections to anything in it.
Is there a motion to support Mr.?
There's 118 pages to it, so...
It was in our board.
Yes, it was on the board. So, we're seeking approval for the EdSpec for Lewis Reading.
I just had one question. I mean, I did go through it, and I thought it all looked pretty good, but I know there had been some talk about putting, I'm going to say, some non-school functions, community center sort of stuff at that building. Is that in the specs?
Yes.
Where is it in the specs? Because I didn't see it.
So, I just want to say, like, we say it's a, just clarity, it's going to be shared spaces within the building, so it's not a specific space or community space. It's shared spaces within the building. So, like, when the school's not using it, it's going to be available for the community to use, just like all the rest of our schools have, while they're used by the community at different times.
Well, sure, I don't have a... I don't have a problem. We make, any classroom in theory is available if you sign up and pay the price. I just don't want us building space for others to use.
It's not set up in a way like the Star Campus where we're building a place for a doctor's office, but we're building it or a laundromat, like, but those services will be available within the building for families outside of school hours.
But it's space we otherwise will use.
Yes, but it's not reserved unused space.
Right, because, I mean, we've talked about market pressure money. We've talked about the fact that this is going to go over budget only because of inflation.
No, no, it's not extra square footage. It's all shared use space. Now, there may be some computer things where they come in and they can learn how to use a computer, but that's our computer lab anyway.
Right, right, yeah. No, I just, I mean, I just don't want to be building, you know, a health clinic that isn't for the school. I mean, if there's health facilities, they need to be for the school, and then if after hours, people want to use any space, I don't know that I really care. I just don't want us building extra space.
No, no, it's not extra space. Now, there may be partnering with other groups, PAL, Christiana Care, things like that, that'll utilize our spaces, but it wouldn't be like, we're not using that space for ourselves.
Right. Okay.
Someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion when you approve the specifications for Lewis Reading as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams, to approve the education specifications for Lewis-Saul Reading Middle School as presented. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Norm, you're an aye. Motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, I'm going to ask Mr. Spoor to address items M-N-O-N-P.
Good evening, everyone. Before you tonight in your packet are salary scales for our four non-union employee groups. As Mr. Loftus indicated during the presentation, raises for the coming school year are built into the operating budget. What you see before you reflects a 2% raise on the local side that is indicative of what is also passed on to our unionized employees through their collective bargaining agreements, as well as the money that the state has allocated for raises on the state side. Tonight, we're asking for approval of all four salary scales as presented.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the custodial chief's local salary scale, the clerical local salary scale, the nutrition manager's local salary scale, and the administrator slash specialist salary scale as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Witt, to approve the four scales as presented. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on the motion? Hearing none, those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Norm is a yes? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Norm, you weren't on earlier, but we have to ask you to just announce your vote specifically since you're not here in the room.
It was part of when they went over how you have to do meetings if you have it being recorded and somebody's on Zoom. Just so you know. That's why I keep asking, sorry. I have a question about the agenda, Dr. Burrows. At one point when we were reviewing it earlier, there was a change order. Did we need to revisit that for one, or we tabled? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it in my little chicken scratches. Okay, moving on, next agenda item, Personnel Report for Approval. Dr. Spoor.
Before you tonight is the July Personnel Report. We're asking for approval of the report with the addition of the candidate selected during executive session.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the Personnel Report as presented with the addition from our executive session.
I have a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams, to approve the Personnel Report for July, including the name for executive session. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns with this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Any opposed?
It's the voice of God from overhead.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Burrows has...
So, I was remiss in my report. We do have a new person sitting up here tonight. We have a new assistant superintendent of pre-K through elementary, Dr. Gina Robinson. I'd like to welcome her.
We know you fill the big shoes of Dr. Pepe Kai, but we know that you also spend over a year being her right hand, so we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda is the establishment of our next meeting. We'll be here on August 9th at 7 o'clock in this boardroom. Fingers crossed we have power and technology. Thank you to all of you who dealt with the heat and lack of light and a little bit of the circus. As you know, if you've joined us tonight, we have many items that were tabled that will be joining our agenda next month. So, that is all for tonight. Thank you for coming to the July meeting of the Appicouin McSchool District.